Ready? Are we all ready? Good morning. So today's Tuesday, February eighteenth. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Board of County Commissioners. The time is nine thirty-one. So Erica, can you do the roll call?
Commissioner Malika?
Here.
Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Oderesio?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here. So you can please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just need a motion to approve today's agenda.
Madam Chair? I'd like to approve today's agenda as it was written, except with removing section six L and removing seven A one from the agenda. Everything else, I would move to approve it on today's agenda.
Second. Agenda is approved five to zero. All right, next item on our agenda is awards and presentations. We don't have anything this morning, so we're on to public comments. So Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We have one person signed up for one of the land use cases.
Okay, so we'll get to, excuse me, land use. Excuse me. And we'll call the public up at that time to talk for the land use matter. When we get to that item on the agenda, anything from the board to communicate? Nothing? Okay, we're on to the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second. Consent calendar passes five to zero. The new business item was seven A one will be postponed to a future date. Anything from County Attorney?
Good morning, Commissioners. I would ask that we go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four six four oh two four B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the Daru claim.
So moved.
And then also, oh, sorry, I'll wait for the voting. And then also another executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding compliance with executive orders potentially impacting federal funding.
So moved.
Second. Okay, those both pass five to zero. Thank you, Heidi. Does staff need a minute to set up for land use, land use cases? Just a minute? All right, let's convene at nine forty. Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting. We're at the land use. It's nine thirty-nine AM. So the case is to be heard. Do you want to help us out? Jen, introduce to the introductions?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. Jen Rutter, Planning and Development Manager. We just realized that the applicant for the first case is not present at this time. It might be because of the weather. So if it would be possible, maybe we could switch to the two cases.
I'm fine with that. Are you okay with that, Erica? Okay.
So the first case would be Country Club Branchettes filing one amendment number one.
Great.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cody Spade. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And I'm here to present to you the case PLT twenty-two-three dash thirty-five, Country Club Branchettes filing one amendment one. This case is located in the vicinity of three zero four zero zero east one sixty-second avenue. The request before you today is a subdivision replat to amend the original major subdivision, which initially created fifty-six lots to create sixty lots for a total of four additional lots being added. Here's an aerial view of the site. As you can see in the top right corner here, this is located north of DIA, all the way at the county's northern border. The lots here highlighted in blue are the lots in question. These are how the lots stand today. As you can see, a little bit bigger than the average lot, as well as some irregular lot lines the applicant is here to clean up. And the current zoning for these lots, as well as the surrounding subdivision, is RE Residential Estate. It should be noted as well that both the current and proposed lots would be meeting the RE lot standards, including lot width and lot size. The future land use for these properties, as well as the surrounding area, is residential low. This is both consistent with the requests, as well as the zoning of residential estate. And here are some site photos. The photo on the left is looking directly at the site with the photos on the right looking north and west from east one sixty-second avenue. And this was the subdivision replat that was submitted by the applicant. As you can see here, the original lot lines over here on the right with this diagonal one being one of them, as well as this portion, as well as the new lots that are being proposed. Basically, mostly cutting these existing lots in half. And a little bit clearer picture of what those proposed lots would look like with the approval of this application. And when considering a subdivision replat, the criteria that shall be considered is the subdivision replat complies with these standards and regulations, the original conditions of approval. Not conforming lots are not created, and in the case of not conforming lots, the nonconformity is not increased. The subdivision replat is in keeping with the purpose and intent of the subdivision regulations, and the approval will not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare. During the referral period for this application, we did send out one hundred and twenty-two notifications to property owners and occupants within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet or one mile. We did not receive any comments from the public on this case. We also reached out to referral agencies in the area, and the following responded without concern. During a public hearing meeting held on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, before the Planning Commission, one member of the Planning Commission identified concern with why the lots were not numbered with the amendment, but rather just the total number. Staff indicated at that time this is what was approved by the surveyor. No members of the public were present during the public hearing, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously six to zero to recommend approval of the application. And from staff's analysis of this project, we do feel that it complies with these standards and regulations and the additional original conditions of approval. Not conforming lots are not created, and in the case of not conforming lots, the nonconformity is not increased. It is in keeping with the purpose and intent of the subdivision regulations, and it will not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare. And therefore, staff is recommending approval of this case PLT twenty-two-three dash fifty-five, four findings of fact, two conditions precedent, and three notes. The findings of fact are as follows. And the conditions precedents be that a certificate of taxes paid must be provided the Adams County Community and Economic Development Department prior to the recordation of this plat, and a payment of thirty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-nine and twenty-four cents shall be made to the Adams County Community and Economic Development Department prior to the recordation of this plat, and this payment is for cash and lieu public land dedication requirements. Additional notes to the applicant include that the applicant shall comply with all building, zoning, fire engineering, and health codes and regulations. The applicant is required to obtain a separate grading permit prior to importing any amount of inert fill onto the subject property, which includes demonstrating that the fill material meets the definition of inert fill material. And lastly, all utilities shall be located underground pursuant Adams County Development Standards and Regulations. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Spade. Is there any questions from the board for staff? Nope? Okay, so then if the applicant is present, if you'd like to come down and either make a presentation or comments, you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jay Skolnick, S-C-O-L, and is a Norman, I-C-K. I'm the owner of Country Club Branchettes. My address is sixteen thirty-five East Layton Drive, Anglewood, Colorado eight zero one one three.
Welcome.
Thank you. But I'd request like maybe one correction where it says applicant's name. It says PC Homes. Maybe it should be like Country Club's owned by Premier Community Developments. PC Homes is actually not the company, and so I think it's just under, I think it just says under applicant. Just a typo almost.
Okay.
And also, maybe we could check into that cash and lieu, because it's the same cash and lieu I paid. Like when you really think about what it's for, like it's for, you know, not having a school site and not having maybe some other improvements. But it's already been paid when Country Club was platted. All I'm doing is really lot line adjustments and adding some lots, because they were in excess of, basically, I didn't have enough water. I retain, I got more water because the land to the east is going to be developed later on as an extension of this. So it sort of seems onerous to be, especially for eight lots, thirty-eight thousand dollars. Maybe I could, you know, if you can request like a review of that, because maybe literally like the formula works, but it's already been paid once, and it seems a lot for eight lots. I don't, I haven't reviewed the formula, but especially when I'm really getting four extra lots, not eight lots. It's not like a new plat. I'm just going from four to eight, because I got more water. My zoning was really constrained by water, not by zoning, which sort of happens a lot out in the rural areas. So I'm just not sure if the cash and lieu actually makes sense.
Okay, appreciate it. Anything else?
Uh, well, I just wanna thank you for, you know, approving it originally. You know, it was fifty-six lots. I've sold all fifty-two. Sort of, you know, it's just really satisfying when you see all these builders out there, and they're all young guys that are doing one or two homes a year, and it's, um, you know, when you really think about it, it's about five, six million dollars of annual taxes. So it's, it's worked out for everybody, and these young guys are doing a great job. Their homes are averaging about a million two. And, um, I'd just like to finish off that, like, I started in the county in ninety-eight, and I was always doing affordable housing. Started in, unincorporated Adams near Commerce City. And, uh, I just wanna put it out there. If there's any pieces that maybe economic development knows of, or any, um, pieces that the, you know, I know like there's sort of been a state movement to, for vacant land to be sort of out there to be developed. I do a lot of modular housing, and I truly think I can get housing in the low three hundreds if I could find the right piece. Cuz I am doing some fix and flips where I'm actually recycling the houses in the low three hundreds cuz they were old manufactured homes. I, I started in modular housing in ninety-eight, and I still am in that business, but I'm doing it in Strasburg. But I'd love to find a piece back in the city where I could do like small lots in the three, you know, the low three hundreds with, you know, modular housing, including, you know, where they'd include, own the land. So if there's any pieces out there that the county knows about that are not on the market, I'd be very interested to talk about that.
Okay.
That was my first project.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Skolik. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Odoricio.
Just for the sake of clarity, can you, um, describe, um, for the public and maybe some of our new folks, how we use, what is cash in lieu of? Uh, what is it in lieu of? Instead of requiring X, Y, and Z, we're asking for cash. Um, and then, um, that also like might help folks in the public who are watching, so they have a question.
Sure. So public land dedication, um, occurs with every new subdivision application. Uh, we collect, uh, public land needs to be dedicated to the school district and to local park districts, as well as the regional park, and we'll, we'll have a conversation with the board next week about how these are calculated. Uh, currently, um, we're using, uh, numbers, um, that, uh, are, attribute a number of children, uh, per household, um, and, and the use of, um, an amount of park per household. There's a certain, uh, calculation, um, formula that was based on information from the nineteen eighties, uh, that we're currently using. So, um, again, we're gonna meet next week to talk about how that's, how that's going to be updated. Um, but right now, every new subdivision is required to provide those, um, those resources, uh, to the community and contribute their fair share. Um, and that's instead of, uh, land that's able to be dedicated, uh, not every subdivision is large enough. Um, we will take, and the Board of County Commissioners decides when it's appropriate, the, uh, cash in lieu of, of that land. And that land is, is based, the, the calculation of the land is based on, um, a formula, uh, that's located in our development standards and regulations.
Got it. So I, I appreciate that, and the money goes towards, it's either we're asking for land or the money, and it's in situations where you have smaller parcels like these, meaning like smaller subdivision, I guess. Most, most developers would rather have the productive land and then pay the cash as their contribution to that rather than us asking for land. So I, I'm okay with proceeding, uh, but I will take, um, in my opinion, I think we are going to look at this long term, but just may not impact this case. So thank you for that input. Uh, I think that's important. So thank you to the applicant for that. Um, and thank you for Jen and staff for clarifying that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Others? Questions for the applicants?
Uh, I just brought it up because it has been paid before. This is not new land, so it's sort of double taxation, but, you know, I don't wanna be ungrateful, but.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, and, and not to go into back and forth. I support it as it is today. We've got, uh, we're creating four new parcels, uh, which means potentially four different families, which increases the, um, amount of potential impact to parks and the schools. So I'm okay with proceeding today. Um, I'm sure you'll do well with these, with the economics of having four new parcels, um, doubling up, and so I, I appreciate the input, and I will make sure that we, I will pay attention to that as we discuss it next week, so, but I'm not recommending any changes to today's recommendation. I wanna thank staff, and, uh, after you guys are done, if somebody wants to make a motion, feel free, but if not, let me know.
Okay, I just have a question for s- Well, let me go to the public. So is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak to this matter? Seen none? Um, back to the commissioners for discussion. Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. Uh, I would just say, I, I appreciate the conversation, um, and, and the comment by the applicant, but I also will be supporting just moving forward, um, as it is presented today, and I thank Commissioner Odoricio for bringing, uh, uh, asking for the clarification. It is helpful being a new commissioner to just get a little more context and perspective on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. So I just have a question for staff. Um, so the cash and lieu, it was for the fifty-six lots, and now for the additional four lots, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So if there's no more discussion, then it's back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the case of PLT twenty twenty-three dash fifty-five with four findings of fact, two condition precedents, and three notes.
Second? Clerk, I think there's a lag in the system. Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio? Commissioner Baca?
Yes, thank you. So the item passes five to zero.
Yeah, Chair, does that bring us back to the other applicant?
Yeah, I think she's checking to see if the other applicant is here.
Yes, Commissioners. Uh, Jen Rutter is running out to lobby just to check and see if the applicant has arrived.
Great. Thank you so much. And did they bring dogs? Everyone needs puppy therapy. Yeah, Salami. I sent you photos. Salami is very friendly. That was a no. Okay, thank you, Jen. So the question was, does the applicant need to be present to proceed? Phone to friend.
No, the applicant does not, does not need to be present, and certainly the applicant has submitted a lot of information in writing, and you can certainly consider all of that and, and still act today on the application.
Okay. Sir? Staff wanna proceed? Okay.
Could I ask a question, a clarifying? Sure. No, I, I love that we're proceeding, but a clarifying question. Um, sometimes we, if we have a concise executive session, we could adjourn for thirty minutes and do that and come back. Do you have an executive session? You said one of them was long, but I couldn't remember if you said both of them were long.
I do have one that I could do fairly quickly.
I defer to the chair, just as an idea.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Um, what, and I have to look. What, what was the timing that we had scheduled for these land use hearings till we begin study sessions initially today?
I think on our calendars-
They were scheduled from ten AM to eleven AM.
Okay, I love that idea, and I think that's a good, fair, smart move, and then you could also make a phone call and find out. What I don't wanna do, this also gives us an opportunity to say, we tried to call you, you had it scheduled, and then what would, if we rush it, get through, and all of a sudden like, I didn't like how, I wanted to say this or something. So I really like that idea, and I would support Emma's idea.
So I would go ahead and, with the support of the board, uh, take a recess, and we can do executive session, um, at this time, then we can come back and reconvene, and hopefully in, in that time period, uh, the applicant um, will appear, because it really wasn't, it was at least on our calendars. I don't know if that's publicly when you tell applicants to be here. It wasn't on our calendars until ten AM, and it's just right before ten AM. So hopefully the applicant will have an opportunity, um, to be present when this, when we reconvene.
A special thanks to staff for being ready, and you guys are awesome.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and go on recess. The time is 9:59 and then we'll come back and reconvene the land use hearing.
...
Ready? Okay, the time is ten forty-six and we're gonna reconvene the land use hearings. So, Mr. Spade.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Cody Spade, I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. Just wanted to quickly thank you guys for the quick recess during that time we were able to reach out to the applicant. His wife's been pretty sick the past couple of days, he won't be able to make it, but he did give us his blessing to proceed today with the hearing. So with that being said, I'm here to present to you Tailwagon Dog Boarding Case Number RCU 2023-6, Located at four three two zero zero East one thirty-sixth Avenue. The request before you today is a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial kennel or dog boarding operation in the Agriculture Three Zone District. And here's an aerial view of the site, up to the right you can see where this is located in the county, to the northeast of DIA. It is located along East one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue where the property does take access from that road. And it is bordered to the east by Harbeck Road and to the west by Peterson Road. And here's a little bit closer view of the site via aerial view. There'll be a more specific call-out on the site plan in a couple of slides, but most of the operations, including the single-family home and the dog boarding operation, will be taking place in the northeast corner of the site. The current zoning for this land is Agriculture Three, and a dog boarding operation is allowed within the A-three Zone District with a conditional use permit. And the future land use is agriculture large-scale, this is both consistent with the A-three zoning as well as the request before you today. And when looking at a conditional use permit, the criteria that shall be considered is that the use can be permitted in the Zone District. It's consistent with the purpose of the regulations, complies with the regulations and performance standards, compatible and harmonious to the surrounding area, addressed off-site impacts, site is suitable for the use with a convenient and functional layout, and utilities and services are available to support the use. And here's the site plan I mentioned that was provided by the applicant. To the left here, you can see an overall view of the site with the site boundaries. This black box in the upper-right corner is a call-out to the site plan to the right side. The structure highlighted in red would be the single-family residence. It is a performance standard that a permanent residence be associated with a dog boarding or commercial kennel operation. The blue structure that's outlined is the barn that the dog boarding facility will take place in, and the large blue square to the south of that is the play area for the dogs. And during staff's analysis, we, you know, this is accessory to the principal use. It does conform to the development standards, including the performance standards specific to a commercial kennel. Those include adequate space, fencing, a washroom, meeting the minimum size requirements for the actual kennels that the dogs would be stored in, as well as a certification from the Department of Agriculture to operate at this use, which the applicant has obtained. They've addressed off-site impacts, and the site is appropriate for the use. And during the referral period for this case, we did reach out to forty-four property owners and occupants within one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty feet. Two public comments were received. Both were in support of the dog boarding operation. We also reached out to referral agencies in the area, and the following responded without concern. And during the Planning Commission public hearing held on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, there was a question about the amount of dogs that would be kept at a single time. The applicant addressed that it would be a maximum of thirty dogs kept at one time. No members of the public were present to speak during the public hearing, and it was voted unanimously six to zero to recommend approval of this application. And staff's analysis does feel that this request conforms with the criteria of approval for a conditional use permit, including complying with the regulations and the specific performance standards for a dog boarding operation, as well as being compatible and harmonious to the surrounding area, addressing the off-site impacts, and with the sites suitable for the use with the convenient and functional layouts. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit RCU twenty-two-three-six, with eight findings of fact, six conditions, and two notes. The findings of fact are as follows. And the recommended conditions of approval: Number one, the conditional use permit shall expire on February eighteenth, twenty-thirty. A number of the additional conditions of approval do relate directly to the performance standards for a dog boarding operation. Just making sure the applicant is keeping up with those standards as they operate. Spillage and leftovers from feedings must be removed not to attract creatures and to reduce odor- odors. Solid wastes associated with the kennels must be regularly picked up, bagged, and disposed in a sanitary landfill. All wastes shall be removed on a weekly basis to ensure this does not create a nuisance. All dogs and cats being boarded shall remain within the property except when leashed. Parking shall not be permitted in the absorption area of the onsite wastewater treatment system. And a maximum of five vehicles can be stored outdoors on the property. Any additional vehicles must be stored indoors. And the recommended notes to the applicant are as follows: The applicant shall comply with all building, zoning, fire, engineering, and health codes and regulations. All operations shall conform to the commercial kennel performance standards required by Section four-nine-two-dash-thirteen of the county's development standards and regulations. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board or staff? Commissioner Hudson?
Uh, thank you. I've, thank you for the presentation. I have a question about one of these conditions about the maximum number of vehicles. Is, is five, is that the number of vehicles? Is the idea that that's the number of vehicles belonging to the property owner, or are they also going to be parking car? I mean, is it given their proximity to the airport, and it's, they're gonna be a kennel? Are they gonna park cars there too, or is that why we put a condition on that?
So that is the standard in the Agriculture Three Zone District, in terms of the amount of vehicles allowed on the property. That's more so just a condition to kind of delineate between people coming and going and dropping off their dogs, and just basically something for the applicant to be aware of when, you know, tracking people coming and going to the site.
Very good, thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Odoricio?
So, um, what is there? Help me understand. I might have missed this piece. I was trying to, is there any sort of licensing or permit beyond the land use piece for someone to operate such a kennel?
Yes, the applicant has obtained a license from the Department of Agriculture. They handle the licensure for all commercial kennels.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is because we don't have the greatest of luck in Adams County with some of these larger animal storage and sales facilities, and so I'm just wanting to make sure that when we get into a situation where if somebody were to claim that there's some sort of wrongdoing going on in the, on the property, that there are multiple layers of oversight. I would like to ask that we would add a condition that allows animal control to periodically go in without and review the facilities. I guess that might be a legal thing to ask, but like, could we say that that animal control could periodically, if they determine it's appropriate, be able to go look at that since it is a commercial facility? I knew the lawyers would start talking. And I, yeah.
Can you give me a second?
Yeah.
Can I, Steve, is it, or Commissioner Odoricio, is it okay if I ask a clarifying question on your question?
Yeah.
So a clarifying question on Commissioner Odoricio's question is, is it at any time or a complaint-based inspection? Like, when they say they can go at any time, like, I'm just kind of curious, what is, what does that mean, anytime, anytime, or like, if there is a complaint?
Yeah, I want to find out from the attorney what their thoughts are.
So, we can go into executive session if you want to have more conversation about it, but the easy answer is that, no, I don't believe that that is an appropriate function for our animal control officers and would exceed their statutory authority.
Yeah, okay, and the fact that there is a different permitting agency does give me some, some comfort. I'm playing this out based on other situations we have in the county. There's gonna be issues of noise and dogs, and this is just inevitable of what's gonna happen, so I just want, I just don't know what other kind of standards we can set that won't have an impact that would help mitigate some of the impact on the surrounding folks. It's open, pretty open now, but there are gonna be some situations where we need to address things, and by the time we approve it. I think the fact that it goes to twenty-thirty and not beyond is our checks and balances, so I'm kind of thinking and talking in rough draft as I go through this issue, because I'm telling you now, we have lots of situations in this county of things like this. The fact that we have a different agency to address some of those issues, the fact that we can go in if there is some sort of animal issue, if there's some sort of reasonableness, the report may be some sort of abuse on that basis, rather than unfounded, like as Commissioner Pinter was mentioning. I feel comfortable to do this for now. I, I would even lower the expiration date and then let them kind of play it out for three years or four if we need to, but I would say just having a lot of eyes on this, because we have had so many problems with these types of facilities makes. So I put it on the table as if you guys would be willing to do a three-year, or what would be the pros and cons of that? A lot of times the question comes down to capital investment. Does, is it worth it for them?
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your answer. I, my clarifying question I didn't hear in your response, Heidi. Like, if there is a complaint, like, what, you know, what are the situations when animal control does have statutory authority?
And again, I could give a more clear answer, if, you know, if you want me to pull up the statutes, but my, my general recollection is that animal control responds, but generally does not have the ability to enter premises without occupant permission, whereas the licensing authority does have that ability.
Okay, thank you so much for that. I missed that distinction. Thank you.
Others?
I, I appreciate the question, Commissioner. I don't know if I have a question for staff. I think, I, I think my only question for staff, I thought it was gonna be a renewal of an existing when I first saw the title. So is the five-years standard for this type of accessory use?
Thank you for the question. Oftentimes, whenever a facility is getting started, we will recommend a shorter time period, like, three or five years to allow them to operate and, and see how they end up doing, if there's any complaints during that time period, and then maybe subsequent renewals. We'd recommend a longer time period, like ten years, for example.
Okay, um, my next question is, is this is an Ag-three, is what I wrote down. The future is also gonna be large-scale. I, how do I want to phrase this? I'm not, I think in other zoning districts, I would be more concerned where there's very, very close neighbors, close in proximity. I'm okay with the five years, but I, the applicant's not here, so if we want to go into, I'm okay with the five years. Is there anything else from the board? Yes, Commissioner Hudson?
I would say I did really appreciate the mention of a possible three-year time limit because just thinking about the number of potential dogs being there at one time, up to thirty animals. But, and to your point, Chair, that because most of the land around it is undeveloped and it's going to remain, can you, I'm sorry, can staff please remind me what the future land use designation is of that? Is it going to stay?
Agriculture large-scale.
Okay, so that's, that's what it's going to remain. I think, given, it was a great point to bring up, given where this particular lot sits, I'm also comfortable with five years, but I'm glad that we, I appreciate the five years. I do think that we definitely want to, you know, make sure that it's, that it, that it's performing and not having an adverse impact on the surrounding area at that time.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Commissioner Malika?
Um, no, not a question, but agree. I'm comfortable with moving with the five-year, moving forward, and then reviewing it at that time.
Okay, yeah, me as well. Thank you so much. So, anyone from the public here to comment on this item? I see only staff present. Okay, so any additional discussion by the Commissioners before we go to a motion? I'm not seeing any. I will just have, I just have one comment. I really appreciate Commissioner Odoricio bringing up the noise complaint. It is, I have less concern about those that are going through the process. I think having a certification from the Department of Ag says a lot about what kind of business that they want to run. Coming through our own process, I think that that's, and conforming to all of the, what they set out on their, their, their plan, their partial plan, says a lot about an applicant, how they're gonna run their business. My concern in eastern Adams County is really those that are doing this independently, that are not coming through the regular process, and it's really the welfare of those animals that I'm concerned with. I did get an email that there's animals that show up periodically at a site. Seems like when we do get called, that the animals aren't there. It's dogs in this case, so I think that that's a different, different type of business and residence in the zoning area that's really raising concern about the residents out there. This one I have less concern, so I'm comfortable with the five years as well. So if there's no other discussion, then we can do a motion.
Madam Chair?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve conditional use, RCU two-thousand-twenty-three-six, with eight findings of fact, six conditions, and two notes.
Second.
And the motion, the land use case passes five to zero. So with no additional items on our agenda, we are adjourned this morning at eleven oh-three.